But she lied on him, and Mr. Potipher cast him into prison. But in verse 21 of chapter 39 it says, "But the Lord was with Joseph, and showed him mercy, and gave him favor. And there he met the butler, he met the baker, who both had dreams, that Joseph interpreted for both of them. And when Pharaoh had a dream, the chief butler remembered Joseph." So Joseph interprets Pharaoh's dream, and gives him a plan to save the nation of Egypt. Pharaoh made Joseph ruler over all the land of Egypt. Even his brothers had to come to him to buy. They had fear because of what they had done to Joseph. Now can you imagine what was happening in Mr. Potipher's house? When they were sitting around the breakfast table, they were reading the Egyptian Journal and Constitution. And that was little Joe, as prime minister of Egypt. Now I don't know about you, but I would have wanted to choke Mrs. Potipher if I had been Mr. Potipher. Because now they have to honor Joseph as the prime minister of Egypt. So his brothers come to him, and in Genesis chapter 50 verse 10, Joseph said, "Fear not, for am I in the place of God." They thought that Joseph was gonna try and do something back to them because of what they had done to him. But Joseph realized that in order to walk with God, you can't do people like they do you. He had to forgive them despite of. He says, "But as for you, you thought evil against me, but God meant it unto good." You see, if you'll just hold your peace, God will take care of you, and God will fight your battle. Because I read what Paul said, "All things work together for the good of them who are called according to his purpose and love the Lord." So if you'll learn to hold your peace despite what's going on all around you, despite what people say about you, you'll hold your peace and let the Lord fight your battles. The Bible says, "Love your enemies; pray for those who despitefully use you." Because unforgiveness is like you drinking poison and hoping the other fellow will die. It will never happen. Shall we pray? Father, in the name of Jesus, as we come together to do the work of the people's house, we thank you for your guidance, we thank you for your wisdom, we thank you for the leading of the Holy Spirit, Father. Honor everything that we do here, Father. Let it be said by the people of the state of Georgia that they honored you first of all, as Joseph honored you, Lord. And be with us, Lord, and give us the wisdom that we need, Father. And we'll be sure and give you all the praise, honor, and glory. For it's in Jesus' name that we pray, amen. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America.
The gentleman from the 128th House District has just delivered a message we all will take to heart. Thank you, Matt. Doorkeepers, you may open the doors, unlock the doors. Let the action begin. We have a doctor of the day who is down in the clinic, I think at this point in time. Our doctor of the day resides in Representative Sheila Jones's district. Dr. Kelly DeGraffin Reed is down awaiting you to come by and visit with her. And I'll encourage you, if you don't feel well, certainly go visit our doctor. But more importantly, go by and visit our doctor and express to her your appreciation for her being here today. The clerk will now read the resolution establishing the order of business for the day.
Representative Astration of the 104th House, finally establishes the order of business under first part of the period unanimous consents. Introduction of bills and resolutions. First reading and reference of House bills and resolutions. Morning orders.
Is there any objection to the adoption of the resolution establishing the order of business for the day? Chair hears none, and the resolution is adopted. Mr. Clerk, will you read a series of resolutions?
House Resolution Number 1 EX. By Astration of the 104th, to notify the Senate and the House of Representatives has convened. House Resolution 2 EX. A resolution by Representative Astration of the 104th relative to meetings and adjournments of the General Assembly and for other purposes.
We need to adopt our opening day resolutions. So at this time, we will take up House Resolution 1 EX, notifying the Senate that the House of Representatives has convened. The chair now recognizes the gentleman from the 104th House District, the majority leader of this House, Representative Astration. Representative Astration.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So ladies and gentlemen of the House, as we do every time we convene for a legislative session, we have a first resolution which is up on the screen for you here. It's HR 1 EX. And this simply notifies the state senate that the House of Representatives has convened and is ready to transact business for this special session. Would ask for your favorable support of the resolution. Thank you.
Is there any objection to the adopting of the resolution? Chair hears none, the resolution is adopted. Chair will now recognize the majority leader, I think. Mr. Leader?
Yes, sir.
I think you'll need to go back to your desk for the motion. For what purposes Representative Astration rise?
Make a motion.
State your motion.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the House immediately transmit House Resolution 1 EX to the Senate.
Speaker Astration, Majority Leader Astration. Sound pretty good, didn't it? Some days it sounds better than what you think. So I move that H, what is that, House Resolution? HR 1X be immediately transmitted to the Senate so we can get them busier on that side. Is there objection? Hearing none, it is ordered. Mr. Clerk, if you'll read Resolution 2 EX.
House Resolution Number 2 EX by Representative Astration of the 104th relative to meetings and adjournments of the General Assembly.
The gentleman from the 104th Majority Leader, the House Representative Astration, is recognized to present the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This is House Resolution 2 EX, which is up for you on the screen. And this is several pages, so we'll just go through each of the pages. But this is our standard adjournment resolution when we begin a new session. So what you'll see here is this has us in session for today through this Friday, close of business this Friday. And then we will adjourn until Monday. So we will not be in session on Saturday and Sunday. I understand there's a football game occurring on Saturday just down the road in Atlanta, some of us will be watching. But we will be out of session Saturday and Sunday, and we'll resume on Monday of next week. There's also just standard language, which is included in all of our adjournment resolutions for if some unforeseen or emergency situation were to come about. Would ask for your favorable consideration. And if while I'm up here, Mr. Speaker, if the clerk would just go all the way down to, or flip now to page two. Thank you. And if you'd go down from there to line 38. And then flip to page three, please. Very good. We appreciate your favorable consideration of our adjournment resolution for this special session. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
I have a question. Who's playing in that football game, by the way?
It's the defending two-time national champions, the Georgia Bulldogs, Go Dogs! And some other team from our west. I'm not sure who they are, but I'm sure the Dogs will take care of business, Mr. Speaker.
I think you're right, I hope you're right. I know that team from the west is a nemesis, so good luck to the Georgia Bulldogs. Is there any objection to the adoption of this resolution for our adjournment, so we can have an orderly session here? Chair hears none, the resolution is adopted. For what purposes the Majority Leader rise?
Make a motion.
State your motion.
Move that House Resolution 2 EX be immediately transmitted to the Senate.
Majority Leader Astration's moved that HR 2EX be immediately transmitted to the Senate. Is there objection? Hearing none, it is ordered. Mr. Clerk, we will now have first reading of bills and resolutions. The clerk will read.
House Bill Number 1 EX by Representative Leber, the 123rd, be titled an act to provide for the composition and number of state House districts, and to provide for a short title.
Rearporchment and redistricting.
Unnumbered House Bill by Representative Persinger, the 119th, and others, to be entitled an act to amend the act providing authority for members of the Board of Education of Barrow County.
Intergovernmental coordination.
Unnumbered House Bill by Representative Stevens, the 164th, be titled an act to amend the act providing for the creation of one or more community improvement districts in Chatham County and in each municipality therein.
Intergovernmental coordination.
Unnumbered House Bill by Representative Stevens, the 164th, be titled an act to amend the act creating a new charter for the city of Garden City approved April 17, 1973.
Intergovernmental coordination.
House Resolution Number 3 EX, ratifying Governor Brian Kemp's executive order numbers 912, 2301, 1006, 2301, and 1182301, suspending the collection of motor fuel in diesel taxes.
Ways and means.
House Resolution Number 4 EX by Representative Cox, the 28th, condemning Hamas terrorism.
Rules.
House Resolution 5 EX, a resolution by Representative Cox, the 28th, condemning Hamas terrorism and expressing our support for the Jewish people.
Rules.
That completes first readers.
My colleagues, we're going to move on to morning orders now. So I will ask everyone, everyone, to take their seats. We have two special morning orders this morning. Please take your seats. All members, please come from any room and take your seats, please. All members. Someone communicate with the members in any room they need to be in the chamber now. Thank you. We have two very important morning orders this morning. Our state, our country and this world lost a beautiful soul. Feel the same. And we want to make sure that this House, the people's House, honors one of our most noble citizens, Rosalynn Carter. Today she travels back home to be laid to rest in the fertile ground of South Georgia. Mr. Clerk, we have two members that are going to speak to this resolution. And I want to ask the members if you'll stay at your seats. I know everyone would like to join the members up front. But if you will remain at your seats standing, I think that it will be the most respectful, dignified positions we can be in as we hear these two morning orders. With that, Mr. Clerk, will you read the caption to this resolution?
Unnumbered House Resolution by Representative Burns, the 119th, and others, honoring the life and memory of Mrs. Rosalynn Carter.
Chair will now recognize two of our members. Chairman Chokus, who represented the quarters and has represented the quarters in his time here in the General Assembly. And Representative Debbie Butler, a friend of the quarters, friend of Mrs. Carter. Debbie, if you, excuse me, Representative Carter, Butler, if you'll come to speak first, and Representative Chokus, if you'll join her as well. Representative Butler, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, Leader Beverly, and House colleagues. It's always an honor and a privilege to remember someone, but to remember someone as special as Mrs. Carter. It's just an awesome privilege and responsibility, and I'm grateful for it. Miss Carter was warm and welcoming, wise and witty. And whenever I had the opportunity to be in her presence, I felt like it was a Christmas gift. It was just, I always learned something, and I always enjoyed being in her presence. It's impressive to me that the New York Times, of all places in a way, talked about in their article that she journeyed from the small town of rural Georgia to the majesty of the White House, from campaign trails in Iowa to New Hampshire, to refugee camps in Asia, to impoverished villages in Africa. And that did sum up a large part of her life. Her quest for education and adventure seemed to never diminish. And she carried it with her wherever she went. And even as she traveled to 122 countries and learned to ski when she was in her 60s, and fished for trout in Siberia, and climbed Mount Kilimanjaro, those were adventures that she used to not only tell her grandchildren about and to maybe brag a little bit about, but she also challenged the rest of us to continue, to be continuous learners and to be adventurers. Best known as an advocate on mental health, that began right here in our great state of Georgia as the first lady of Georgia. She was very intimately involved with, get this, this is super long, the Governor's Commission to Improve Services for Mentally and Emotionally Handicapped. Georgia was one of the first, and we needed to do this very much, to shift some of our mental health, public mental health, from being too much in an institutional setting into a community-based one. And she was at the root of that with many other advocates and healthcare providers. One of the things that I thought was very impressive over the last few days since she passed away were some of the remarkable comments made by some of our own. And one of the most amazing advocate herself and legislator is Representative Mary Margaret Oliver. And she, her quote that I think just summed up so much of Miss Carter's was she never stepped away from her commitment to mental health reform. And her often repeated message that stigma was the biggest barrier to helping people get well. She was with Mrs. Carter many times and admired how gracious she was and how committed she was to every call she addressed. As the first lady, she was the first one to carry a briefcase and have an office in the east wing of the White House. She continued her fights for mental health, and she also worked on things like the Equal Rights Amendment and pushed for, as a strong advocate for the appointment of women to the administration and to federal judgeships. In the other, in the words of another one of our House members, Representative Lisa Campbell said she was a gracious leader, determined to do everything she could to give a voice to women, to children, the elderly, and those in need. Her deep commitment to mental health changed the world's views about mental illness, paving the way for expanded care and parity. And she taught us how to help ourselves, help others, and uplift the value of caregiving. In 2006, I was serving as the chair of the West Central Georgia Cancer Coalition. Columbus area didn't have a worse cancer incident rate. We had a worse cancer death rate. And we were selected to put the coalition together. And as one of our outreach programs, we decided that we would use some of the teachings we had gathered from going to Americas to the Caregiver Center named for Mrs. Carter. And we won a national award for establishing the Caring for Caregivers Program in the realm of cancer treatment. Little did I know, when the executive director and I flew to New Brunswick, New Jersey, which I had never heard of, and it was 50 below up there that day, and I didn't have near enough clothes to be warm, until I got inside the room and there was Miss Carter. Former First Lady Rosalynn Carter was so excited that Columbus area, the West Central Georgia area, which included Sumter County and Americas and all of the counties on that side of the state, had won the national award, and she was there to give it to us. That was a special treat, but what was more amazing to me is how she took us under her wing, and we went around the reception, and she introduced us to people there like she was, like we were her children, and she was proud of us. I never will forget how special that was and how that showed to me great, great leadership. In the words of Stan Jones, many of you know, and he's worked very hard on mental health for many years, he said that because of her efforts, community-based services, supportive housing, peer support, school-based mental health programs have been established. And because of all of those efforts, it is now acceptable to talk about mental illness. She helped us realize we are all touched by difficult conditions in ourselves and our families. And she has been a humane, innovative, fearless leader. So as we start on the next 50 years of her great legacy, we need to realize she's done Georgia proud, and she's made America great. I yield. Thank you.
Chairman Chokus, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and thank you, Debbie, for those kind words. This is a tribute for Rosalynn Smith Carter. And it's dedicated to President Jimmy Carter, Jack Carter, Chip Carter, Jeff Carter, and Amy Carter. Mrs. Carter was a daughter, a wife, a mother, a grandmother, trusted advisor, advocate, peacemaker, builder of hope, an inspiration to many around the world, a child of God, and the glue that held her family together. During her years in the White House, she was an active and trusted advisor to a husband, President Jimmy Carter. In the years following the White House, she co-founded the Carter Center and worked to relieve the suffering of many poor and forgotten peoples around the world. She did this based on her Christian teachings of service above self, never seeking acclaim, simply doing what was right. Fighting disease, waging peace, building hope. At the White House, and later at the Carter Center, she fought to establish the fact that mental illness was treatable, allowing for those with mental illness to live productive and rewarding lives. She advocated that mental illness and physical illness should be treated equally. And I am very proud of the great strides the Georgia House of Representatives has made in this area. She also founded the Rosalynn Carter Institute for Caregiving, a Georgia Southwestern State University. Having recognized the contribution that caregivers give every day and the need to provide a resource for support, advocacy, education, and training, she worked diligently on behalf of caregivers, both lay and professional, to give them the recognition they deserved. I am also very proud to serve as co-chair to the Rosalynn Carter Institute for Caregiving, an organization that I've been involved with for over 20 years. Mrs. Carter would say there are only four kinds of people in this world. Those who have been caregivers, those who are currently caregivers, those who will be caregivers. have been caregivers, those who are currently caregivers, those who will be caregivers, and those who will need caregivers. May her memory be eternal. Thank you, and God bless the Carter family. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thanks to both of you for those remembrances, and we will, we'll have a moment of silence just for a second, but I want to make sure we recognize the loss of President Jimmy Carter and his life, and that we all, we recognize and say a special prayer for him as he goes through these days and the loss of, of a marvelous person who was his partner in every sense of that word. But I'll also just add, I can't add much to this, but as I think about the legacy we all seek to leave, that legacy is enhanced, emboldened by how we love our families, how we love our communities, how we love those around us. She certainly was a example, a true positive example, how we should all do just that. And I know her life strengthens me to make mine better, as I try to emulate what she stood for and what she practiced, not only preached, but what she practiced. Thank you, Debbie, thank you, Mike, for those remarks and those remembrances. Let's all bow for a moment of solace if you will. Thank you, Lord, for this wonderful person. Amen. We do not have any privileged resolutions, but we do have a couple of announcements as we move on with the business of this day. Chair now recognizes Chairman Corbett for an announcement. Chairman Corbett.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, members of the House. The Rural Caucus will be meeting over in the Ag Building at 12 o'clock. The Georgia Veterinary Medical Association, we put on a program for, so everybody, welcome, come, come join us. Thank you.
Is that lunch? Is that just listening?
Lunch, yeah. Lunch will be served 12 o'clock.
All right. Just want to make sure I wasn't going to get in that trouble. There, you're much better crowded when you have lunch, no doubt about that. Representative Cox, I think I want to recognize you for an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The Georgia Israel Legislative Caucus today at 12:30 in Room 216. The Israel Council General will be here, and we'll be having a lunch and learn with Arab Muslims from the Middle East that will be discussing the Israel-Hamas war. So we'd like for any of you to be there, and appreciate that support. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Lady Cooper, I think you have an announcement, don't you? An important announcement.
It is, sir. Thank you very much. And probably most of you have heard that giving to charitable institutions is down across our state and across our nation. But, and so I would encourage you to find some charity that you can support and do so in these times when they are having hard financial times and the need is great. But there's one that's very important because it actually means the difference, and can mean the difference, between life and death, and that means the need for blood. And I have a friend with me, this is a little symbol of the blood donation group that's outside. The mobile is there. They will be there until 5 o'clock. Now, I would encourage every one of you to go and give blood unless you have some illness or some reason that you can't. But I want to issue a challenge. They tell me that even in these times when there's such a need, that men sort of are really resistant to going. Now, I serve in this chamber, and every man in here has run for public office. If you have run for public office, you are not a wimp. So I would encourage the men in this chamber to go out and give blood and show that group that we have a group of men that are macho and not wimps. So please, it's open until 5 o'clock today. They will be very kind to you, and it takes about 30 to 40 minutes. So please, go and donate. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Speaker.
I didn't know you were going to challenge our manhood, I can just tell you that. Never let you up there if I'd known that.
Well, Mr. Speaker, it's really important because every person that donates is blood for three individuals. You have a chance to save the life of three different individuals, and we're going into the holidays when car wrecks increase and the need is even greater. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Well, I'm going to take up the challenge if Representative Al will come hold my hand, the doctor will hold my hand while I do it. I'm headed down as soon as we adjourn, so we're getting to that point. So I encourage all of us, what a great mission that blood, to give blood and the lives it saves. And I know many of you in here, if not we as individuals, but our families, have had the need for blood over the years. So let's go down and put a little blood in the bank, okay? Let's do that if you can. Representative Kelly, recognized for an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. At 2 o'clock in Capitol 403, the House Bill 300 Working Group in Energy Utilities and Telecommunications will meet. Those members who are on the working group, we'd certainly like you there, as well as any other members of the committee who have an interest. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
All right, listen up. You may want to pay attention to the location of this next one. Chairman Leverett is recognized for an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I appreciate you letting me go after the last presentation about wimps in the General Assembly. We will have a meeting of the Reapportionment and Redistricting Committee at 1 o'clock in Room 406. We're going to move to 506 the rest of the week, but today it's in 406. It will be a public hearing. We'll approve our rules and guidelines, but then we will not actually take action on the proposed maps. We will just hear public comment on them, and I will be presenting them to the assembled group there. So just want to make sure everyone's aware. If you would like to come address the committee, we'd like to hear from you. And if any of you out there have any spare flak jackets, please meet me down here at the, later in the, after the announcement.
What time and what room again?
Room 406 CLOB, I left that out, at 1 o'clock over, over there.
Next one.
Until 6 o'clock, is the time we've allowed. So committee members, you know, be, be, steel yourselves for all of me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have, that concludes our announcements. We have no birthdays, no one's any older, so that's awesome. No birthdays. So with that, the Majority Leader is recognized for a motion.
Mr. Speaker, I move that this House stand adjourned until 10 a.m. on Thursday, November 30th, 2023.
On the motion, excuse me. before? So, Mr. Leader, would you mind restating your motion?
Yes, sir. I move that this House stand in recess until we receive notification that the Senate is in business and that we notify the Governor, and after that is received, that this House stand adjourned until tomorrow, Thursday, November 30th, 2023 at 10 a.m.
On the motion of the Majority Leader, this House will stand in recess until we receive all the notifications back from the Senate when they decide to go to work, and we get those notifications back that we can notify the Governor of the General Assembly's willingness to take up the business of this session. So with that, we will also need to appoint from this House a Committee of Notification that will go down to the second floor and let Governor Kemp know that we're here. So I'm going to appoint that committee and let you know whom they are now before we adjourn, before we, before we stand in recess. We are going to appoint the gentleman from the 26th, Governor's Floor Leader, Lauren McCall, McDonald, almost did it, McCall. The gentleman from the 15th, Representative Matthew Campbell, Governor's Floor Leader. The gentleman from the 9th, Representative Will Wade, Governor's Floor Leader. The lady from the 103rd District, Representative Sue Hong, Governor's Floor Leader. And the gentleman from the 133rd District, Representative Ken Vance. The gentleman from the 134th District, Chairman David Knight. And the lady from the 135th, House District Chairman Beth Camp. They will take care of delivering the motion when we get all of that information back from the Senate. So here's our posture. We will stand in recess, and then we will adjourn as soon as we take care of, of this lagging business we'll get from the Senate, and then we'll be adjourned, and we will come back in tomorrow, November 30th at 10 a.m., 10 a.m. Okay, that's where we are. So we need to get some confirmation from all of you. All those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
That sounded good. All those opposed will say no.
No.
I'm not sure, but I think ayes have it. We'll adjourn until tomorrow after we stand in recess at 10 a.m. on Thursday, November 30th. Thank you.